Are you started? Okay, great. A call to order the city council meeting for the city of North Bend, December 1st, 2020, via virtual meeting. And will the clerk please confirm the roll?
Mayor, all council members are present with the exception of council member Rosen.
Thank you.
Here.
First item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda. It has seventeen items on it. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Out of motion by Mr. God help, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Elwood, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and it is unanimous. Thank you very much for that. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. If you are here this evening and would like to speak to an item that is not on the agenda, please feel free to indicate either in the chat box or by star nine if you called in by phone. And we will call on you, you would have up to three minutes. You'll start by giving your name and address for the record.
Liz Davis, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
She's still muted.
I couldn't find the microphone, sorry.
There you are.
It snuck off the screen. Elizabeth Davis, 225 Taylor Avenue South in North Bend. And I have a couple of comments. Number one, I just would like to thank you at city council members, you do a terrific job. It's not always easy. My second thing is I'm here as the treasurer of the Friends of the North Bend Library. And we are doing, we are having or sponsoring an online program tomorrow night at the library. It is virtual. You go to kcls.org and look at their calendar. If you put in adult programs, that's what it's under and you can find it. It's Chris Fagan is, lives up off the Mount Si Road. And she and her husband trekked across the Antarctica to the South Pole in 2014. They, and she wrote a book and it's kind of an adventure story, but it's from a very feminine perspective. It's absolutely a fabulous story. And if you'd like to be part of the discussion or listen to her talk about her trek to the South Pole, it's tomorrow night at the library at 6:30 PM, well, at the library online. And we'd love to have you come. As of this afternoon at 2:30, there was still one book available. This is what the Friends does is they buy books from local authors so they can have a, we can have a Valley Reads program. And there was one book left, there might still be there tomorrow if you'd like to pick it up. It's, there's no cost. We, you guys buying our library books or our donations help us sponsor these programs. Then the last thing I would like to say, and I hope I can get this done, is we do have the Friends of the North Bend Library has a Facebook page and we are selling our books on that Facebook page. We also upload them to Marketplace, but we put them on the Facebook page. And if you would like to be a friend on our Facebook page, we would love to have you be there. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else?
I'm not seeing anybody else this evening.
There's anyone who may have just joined us that was looking to speak on an item not on the agenda? Please indicate in the chat box or by star nine if you're on the phone. Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Council, the next item on the agenda is appointment to the Business and Economic Development Commission. For the education of the audience that may not know, the Economic and Development Commission is one of three commissions in the city that are staffed by citizens. All of those commissions do have some allowance for folks who live outside of the city. It's a great way to get involved if you have an interest in serving your city. We do have positions come up on a fairly regular basis and you would watch for those being posted in the city's website. Economic and Development Commission does have five members with terms of four years. The commission provides recommendations to the city council for the city's economic growth and development based on specific work plans or projects as assigned by the city council. North Bend Municipal Code 2.30.020 membership states in part that members of the commission shall be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council. All members shall be selected without respect to political affiliation and shall serve without compensation. This evening, I am very pleased to bring to council two members, two members for your consideration. I'm requesting your confirmation of my appointments. First one is Mr. Martin Mason Pierre. I think I got that right to position number two with the term expiring December 31st, 2023. Martin has an extensive background in public relations, communications and marketing, and is currently a senior executive at his firm, which provides services to outdoor recreation and retail firms, among others. As our branding guidelines seek to leverage our great outdoors, we see his skillset as very valuable in this respect. Second, we have a re-up of Ms. Corinne Wilson to position number four where she's currently serving and has generously volunteered her time for an additional term that would expire December 31st, 2024. Corinne has been a active and thoughtful contributor during her time on the commission and her experience will be valuable as we look to refine our future economic strategy. Looking, I'm trying to glance, I do not see if either of them as with us tonight.
Martin's here.
Martin, are you there? Martin, if you would unmute, if you would just give us a few words about yourself and then I'll ask if council has any questions for you.
Absolutely. That's very nice to meet everybody and excited for the opportunity. Yeah, as Mayor said, I'm Martin Mason Pierre and I manage a marketing and communications firm in Seattle that deals with a number of outdoor and active lifestyle brands, including some hometown folks like K2 skis and folks like Dan or Boots and a handful of other outdoor and rec pieces. So excited to bring that to this position potentially and yeah, and hopefully help as much as I can.
Thank you. Do the commissioner, council members have any questions or comments? Ms. Cullen.
Hi, Martin. Thank you for stepping into this role. You sound like a really great fit for our town and I'm excited to see what you can do.
Excellent, thank you.
We're seeing.
Yeah, I would just like to say thanks for volunteering and then also give credit to Corinne Wilson for coming back again. Just, we really appreciate it. EDC is a vitally important program right now as we move forward and trying to find our brand development. We've spent a lot of time implementing the brand, moving it forward is, is the next step. So we appreciate your time and effort on that.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. You're muted.
Yep. Thank you, Martin, for rising up. I'm gonna enjoy getting to know you a little bit or hopefully and, and all that you can offer us. You sound like a great fit for our community, very excited. Thank you.
Very nice to meet you.
Thank you, Mr. Longback.
Everybody's welcomed you already, Martin, and I certainly do the same. And if you have the opportunity, since you are involved as a marketing and brand coordinator for some of these major outlets, we could certainly use your expertise in dragging a few of those folks here to town. So if you have an opportunity, we would, we would welcome such, such an effort. But seriously, thank you very much for volunteering. We only get better as a city when we have people such as yourself step up and volunteer and, and help us get better. And thank you once again for that volunteering.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing none, one, one last call. I don't believe Corinne is not with us tonight. Do not see her, okay? All right, with that, then I would entertain a motion.
Motion, motion to approve AB 20-173, confirming the appointment of Mike Martin Mason Pereira. Did I get that right? Sorry. To position. What? Close enough. I'll, I'll tell you, my name gets butchered too, sorry. Position to make term, position number two, term expiring December 31st, 2023, and the appointment of Corinne Wilson to position number four, term expiring December 31st, 2024, on the Business and Economic Development Commission.
My second.
Think I got Mary in there for that one.
All fair.
I have a, I have a motion by Mr. God Health, second by Ms. Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, it is unanimous. Martin, welcome very much. You guys have a lot of work ahead of you in the coming months. We appreciate your willingness to step up. And counsel for, for your benefit, I believe at this time, that is all commissions fully staffed, at least as we go into the next year. And so that's a great thing.
It's great.
Yep, thank you, thank you all for that. Okay, excuse me, while we get back to the agenda home. Next item tonight, item nineteen is AB 20-174, the selection of the 2021 Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor Pro Tem Elwood.
I'd like to make a motion to approve AB 2174, confirming Chris Garcia as the 2020.
I've got a motion by Mr. Elwood, I think I heard a second by Ms. Miller. Are there any other nominations coming in? Please, please, anyone?
Anybody? Miller? Hello?
Ross, last chance, Ross.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to nominate, I'd like to nominate Chris again.
Thank you, thank you for allowing me a little levity on your, at your expense, Mr. Garcia. I have a motion to approve AB 20-174 confirming, well, actually, let me, let me first have a motion and a second, is there discussion? Mr. Mr. Current Mayor Pro Tem, anything you wanted to add to the fire?
Have fun, my friend, have fun. I will, I'm looking forward, I'm looking forward to it. I wish you well. I mean, this was a crazy year.
So I hope next year isn't, have all the added psychonist that we had to deal with this year. And now, next year will be a good year. Yeah, exactly. That's how I felt almost every day, looking at my email. But, and now that we have a team that's worked together, we all have one year under our belts together. So next year should be even more productive and so it should be good. So, thank you for taking over and Godspeed, my friend.
Motion before you is to approve AB 20-174, confirming Chris Garcia as the 2021 Mayor Pro Tem. All in favor?
Aye.
Chris opposed?
I feel like I should abstain.
I should abstain, yeah, right. Am I saying you're abstaining or are we unanimous?
Oh, we're unanimous, sorry.
You're unanimous, thank you very much. Never want to take chances with you, sir. All right, great, thank you very much. See if I can get to the home again and next on our agenda. Goodness, I'm struggling tonight with my role. Final readings. Next up, item number twenty, AB 20-175, an ordinance adopting the 2021, 2022 biennial budget. Ms. Masco, would you like to give us an update from previous session?
Sure, good evening. The only change that has occurred between the first reading and tonight was removing the 1% property tax increase. And there may have been a few minor changes based on some 2020 activity carrying forward into 2021, but if there was, it was a few dollars here or there. But now, we've already gone through the presentation and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any clarifying questions before we open it to the public? Seeing none. If any member of the public wishes to speak on this item, our biennial budget, the probably the biggest thing we do annually or biennially at least, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine.
We do have one person that wants to speak and I'm probably not going to say her name right. Neela Cumming, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes if you're still with us.
Hey, Noah.
Hi, Noah.
Hey, everybody. Hi, Nella. Hi there. Hi, everyone. So, yes.
Please start with your name and address, Noah.
Yes, yes, thank you. I'm all discombobulated because I can't turn my video on, which is totally fine. You can hear my voice. So my name is Nella Cumming. I live at 231 West Park Street in North Bend. I am here tonight to provide comment on the budget that you're about to discuss or review and hopefully adopt. And what I wanted to say is I've reviewed the budget and I wanted to thank you all and thank the council and the city staff for the generous support that you are considering providing human service providers in the valley and in North Bend. It is not easy during times like these to, to provide that kind of support. I know that, I know there's many, many priorities, but it shows a deep understanding on the, on the behalf of the leaders here in North Bend of the importance of human services to our community and to the residents in North Bend. And I'm just very grateful to you all. I think in all the times that I reviewed the budget, this is really a very significant improvement in support for human services. And I was very gratified to see that as, as many of my colleagues have been in, in seeing that. So I just want to say I'm very grateful for your partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Masco. Anyone else?
I do not see anybody else indicating their desire to speak.
Okay. Mr. God Health, I believe this came through your committee?
Got unmuted myself, yes. Motion to approve AB 20-175, an ordinance adopting the 2020, 21 and 2022 biennial budget and the 2021 salary schedule as a final reading.
Have a second by Ms. Miller?
Wow.
Discussion?
I think we've gone over it. I like, like Nella said, you know, the increase that we see in our social services budget. I think it's good that we're going in, even with a tough year with a balanced budget. We understand that if, you know, some things don't happen, that we'll have to re, you know, hit our reserves, but one hopes that we continue to support our local businesses. So let me put a big push there, guys. There, any local cert, you know, companies, you know, like restaurants, they're still available for takeout, please go out and support local. Holiday times coming around, we're beginning to purchase Christmas items instead of going to the Amazon cart, go find one of your local retailers here. That's my push, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, you had the second, we'll follow you next. I see you, Mr. Garcia.
Okay, hold on here.
You had it unmuted, try again.
Okay. Okay, Alan, you didn't steal my thunder, but I wanted to also speak into, you know, hopefully providing help for our local establishments this, this holiday season. Wonderful people doing wonderful things in business around us and they need our help and support. So don't, please don't forget, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Garcia.
Yeah, just would like to thank the staff, Dawn in particular, and the finance department, management staff, mayor. I know that there was a lot and lot of time put into this budget. Maybe one of the most difficult budgets we've seen in quite a few years. So I just truly appreciate the effort on that. To kind of piggyback on Nella's comments, I too was surprised and grateful. I, I unfortunately have to give him credit, but the mayor really stepped up with that proposal. And I do, I do appreciate that, especially under these times, we're able to do this. I know that, that these are thoughts that are, are on his, on his mind anyway. So as a council person, I appreciate the bump up that we've experienced there as well. Thank you to that, to the council. We've had some lively debates on some of the policy directions. At the end of the day, we've, we've created a budget that will hopefully only get better. So I appreciate everybody's efforts.
Not seeing any other council members, I give you my final thoughts. And thank you, Mr. Garcia, for your kind words. Yes, I'm, I'm very proud that, that we stepped it up in social services. It, that's, that was something very necessary in, in this time period and appreciate council's support on that. And in it, might have been my proposal, but it was universally adopted by this council. I appreciate that. This is, as was mentioned, a very different and difficult budget. At least in the first time that I recall, we dipped into reserves and we, we did that knowingly. We talked about it months and months ago as a possibility. Thankfully, we have solid reserves and are able to do that. And, and it kind of is the juxtaposition of stepping it up in social services that even with the challenge, even having to dip into the reserves, that it was seen as a necessary thing to do. And we appreciate that. We don't know, of course, what's going to come in this, this coming year, three months, let alone the full year or the full biennial. And so there will be most certainly adjustments made throughout the year and time period. And some of that is scheduled adjustments already. So we're going to, we think we've taken a very solid approach here, been very conservative with the overall spending so that if things do indeed turn even worse than they've been, we do have some reserves to cushion that. And if things turn out much better than we anticipate, we know the programs that we left on the sideline that we would be able to go back after. And so with that thought, the, any, any other word? Let me check the council. All right. Motion before you is to approve AB 20-175, an ordinance adopting the 2021, 2022 biennial budget and this 2021 salary schedule as a final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carries, it is unanimous, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda this evening, number twenty-one as a final reading is AB 20-176, a resolution authorizing a development agreement for marijuana retail store. Mr. McCarty, are you with us this evening?
I'm here.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. So yeah, this is coming back to you after your extensive public process. It was more formally introduced to the council in November 17th with the public hearing. The council has got the full record of comment received at the planning commission public hearing, the November 17th council public hearing. And then we've received additional comment following that. And although the public hearing is closed, we forwarded that to you. I sent you today a comment letter from Valerie King. You received a comment letter from Dylan Camp, providing more information on that true party of interest violation for the joint in Seattle, one of the other business owners, Shai Sades. There are other comments that were received earlier that Suzie Opital provided in the public record or in the packet. The only change since the November 17th meeting, which was discussed at that meeting, was to add in the $25,000 mitigation payment for public safety services. And that's an annual mitigation payment that would be applied in the development agreement to the marijuana retail store. So with that, with that, let me just turn it back to council and address questions that you might have.
Counsel, and for the public's knowledge, although the public hearing is closed, we are going to accept public comment on this item and we will be calling on you if you indicate the chat box or star nine after we clear up any council questions. Mr. Garcia.
Yes, sir, could you, could we elaborate on the, the email from Mr. Camp with the violations? He certainly alleged that maybe there was a possibility that that license might be suspended? Is there, is there, could anybody speak to that? I kind of felt like it was an advertising violation.
So yeah, I could, I can speak to it from what I know of it. And this is also from what I spoke with from Lieutenant Henry Gill from the Liquor and Cannabis Board. And I had spoke with him earlier in the year back when it was before the planning commission and the CED council committee. And then just more recently, the, yesterday I spoke with him about the violation. And what it is, is it's called a true party of interest violation. And it involved one of the other individuals who, so Mr. Semenoff is partnering with Mike and Nicholas Revizita, who would operate his North Bend store. So Mike and North and Nick Revizita are also part owners of the joint, a marijuana retail store in Seattle. And there's a true party of interest violation against the joint, which involved somebody that Mr. Revizita had hired as a consultant, but who was actually helping to manage and profiting from the store, which violated marijuana, state marijuana license regulations in that you're supposed to indicate on the license, all owners of the store. He wasn't specifically listed as an owner on the store. And so therefore, what's called the, the true party of interest violation occurred. So that's moving its way through the court, the courts. There was an earlier opportunity to settle that claim and the owner of the store chose not to settle that. And so it's moving up for a hearing and that's status of where it's at.
So, and from a legal standpoint, let me just add that the doctrine of preemption, which basically says the city cannot interfere, intervene in a regulatory scheme that is regulated by the state and the state, both the RCWs and the WAC, fully encompass marijuana regulation. So it would be improper for the city to make a decision based on how this ruling turns out, because that's outside the scope of our purview. Having said that, your development agreement says that the, that the property owner and the operator must be fully compliant with all federal, state and local laws. And in the event that they lose their license, they are in violation of the development agreement, the city could terminate it. So we don't need to worry about the outcome of that, but if this operator loses their license, they no longer have any rights under the development agreement. So, and that will be up to the state and their regulatory agency to make that determination, not the city of North Bend.
Thank you. Yeah, I asked the question, I know we brought it up at the work study, but for the public, what was the percentage that voted in favor of legalizing marijuana within the city of North Bend?
Yeah, that was 60%, looking back at the I-502 results for North Bend crecings.
Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions? Any other clarifying questions? Okay, if you are a member of the public and would like to make comment about this item, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine. I would ask that if you previously made comment either during the hearing or in writing to consider whether you would just be repetitive and to consider whether you need to make those comments again. Certainly, you're right. Anyone, Don?
Nobody, nobody yet.
Okay. Seeing none. Mr. Loudback, I believe this came through your committee.
Thank you, Your Honor, for once again placing me on the agenda with a non controversial item. Motion to approve AB 20-176, a resolution authorizing a development agreement with Wayne Semenoff for a marijuana retail store as a final reading.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Loudback.
I think the staff has done an excellent job of briefing. And then, of course, at the public hearing, we were able to get a lot of valuable input from both sides of the issue. And I think the the record is is very complete. So I look forward to a timely vote.
Yeah, Mr. God, if you were the second, do you speak next?
Nothing to add at this moment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Garcia.
I think one of the things that I I struggle with is is potentially the location. I feel like our staff has done a pretty good job. Mike, appreciate all the time and effort into this into clarifying some of the concerns of the location. But it does give me a bit of pause. I don't feel like there's an overwhelming majority of the people. I actually feel like it's quite the opposite of people who are against having the retail store in North Bend. I wish there was maybe a potentially better spot. But I feel like there's some federal regulations that really limit that, especially on the lending side. There's a lot of the landlords that have federally insured loans as as they should, helps you sleep at night when you have that backing. But I I think that our overall community probably favors this.
Mr. Elwood.
I I concur with those sentiments. And one of the things that I went back and was reading line by line, all the requirements and restrictions, because that's another thing that came to mind is I'm not 100% solid that that's the right location. But I understand that's the only location due to all the due diligence that has set forth. But also the visibility, the appearance, and all those other things were of concern of mine. And going back through and really reading it line by line, I feel that with the help of staff and what the council put together, the the site itself is pretty well managed for something that could be deemed unsightly, if that makes any sense. So that that's given me a little bit more assurance in that. And the fact that this has gone through planning commission and has had had notable public comment on it and all points forward to recommending this. That's another interesting note to take into consideration. However, there was some other great testimony that was submitted, some health testimony that came through. Some science has been put behind it. And you can argue a few different angles on that. But I but I thought that was a great contribution to the body of information that we received. So I think the public on both sides for being vocal in their support or opposition of this. And I agree with Mr. Ladenback. This is a controversial controversial issue. It's interesting that this may be one of the most controversial issues that we have to deal with. But it is nonetheless. So this is not an easy decision is my my point here. So thank you.
Being none, motion before you is to approve AB 20-176, resolution authorizing a development agreement with Wayne Semenoff for a marijuana retail store as a final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Mary, cite you against. Okay, motion carries with council member Miller voting against. Thank you. That completes the regular agenda for the evening, getting us down to mayor, council, and administrator concerns and initiatives. Go in order that I kind of wrote down names here. Mr. Godhill.
Yeah. Oh, thank you. First off, want to wish everybody happy holidays. Also, thank the staff for trolling through and working through a pretty tough year this year. I don't think any of us expected it. I was just talking to somebody today and recalled that as of March was about the time last year when this all happened. So we're coming on, what, nine months of this? And hopefully we're seeing some light at the end of the tunnel and hopefully everybody stays safe. And again, I would encourage everybody to follow all the CDC rulings and distance. Hopefully, we're seeing a lot of hospitalization and we're seeing increase of bed capacity or, you know, overwhelming some of the hospitals. I'm sure Heather can give us some input as we get forward with that. The last thing I also wanted to do is thank the council for passing the ILA today for the Eastside Fire and Rescue. As of today, hopefully tonight, I think the last one to go ahead and pass it is the city Sammamish, and it was on their consent agenda. So I see that by the end of tonight, we should have approval from all the members of Eastside Fire and Rescue to move forward with a corporate, a nonprofit corporation and securing the future of Eastside Fire Rescue going forward. So thank you all for that. And we should have that completed by the end of the year, and it should go into effect. As of, I think, April 1 is our target date for the first for us turning over into a nonprofit organization. So thank you all. And everybody have a happy holiday, happy new year, stay safe. Look forward to seeing you in the new year.
Thank you very much for your work on that ILA and all your work with Eastside Fire and Rescue. For anybody not aware, Mr. God, I'll puts in ungodly number of hours in support of the city with Eastside Fire and Rescue and worked incredibly hard these last years on that particular agreement. So congratulations on that. Mr. Miller. There you go.
I'll get it right. Thank you to our staff. You've been arduously working throughout the year. It's been tough, but you've held so much together. I I really appreciate each and every one of you. Public works, I can say the same thing. And counsel, my fellow council members here, I really appreciate each and every one of you and look forward to getting to know you better as time continues. Please support our beautiful town, local businesses. This holiday season, please stay safe, everyone. I know we talk about it ad nauseam, but it doesn't get old anymore for me. It's something that I naturally do when I wake up. I throw that mask on and enter the day. So please be safe, everyone, and happy holidays.
Thank you. Mr. Long, there.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, since this is probably our last meeting of the year, I wanted to say thank you to everybody, the city staff, my coworkers and my co-council members. I know everybody puts in a lot of time and effort to make this city a better place. And we're all anxious to see this particular year in the books and move on to the next year. Alan, yes, thank you for all your work on EFER. And to everyone else who's working so hard on all their committees and commissions, that's it is something that is valuable and and needs to be recognized. Heather, it sounds like you're going to have to roll up your sleeve here pretty quick. They're talking about shipping vaccines in 10 days. So you're probably going to be one of the first ones to get it. And, you know, thanks to people like yourself who are keeping us safe through this pandemic for you and your coworkers. Thank you very much. Other than that, Your Honor, that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia.
Well, I go a lot of those same thoughts, but I'm going to say them again anyways. Happy holidays. Please be safe. Please treat each other with kindness, respect, dignity. There's a lot of people hurting out there, both financially, emotionally, they're stressed. You don't know their situation. Sometimes a simple act of kindness, warm hello, a wave could make a make or break somebody's day. So please, please be aware of that. Please support the small businesses in our community. Oh, Rob, sorry to make you tear up there.
Yeah, yeah.
Please support the small businesses of our community, and the big ones, but the small ones. The the stress that some of these business owners are going through right now is is truly heartbreaking. They thought they got out of it, were back in. Please wear your mask, be safe. I know it's going to be difficult this holiday season to not see your friends and family, but think of your friends and family, their health and safety. Mayor, it's been a good year. You came into came into it at the right time, 2020, and you go down is perfect, right? It'll only get easier from here. Fellow council members, it's been an honor to work with all of you. I appreciate the vote of confidence for the mayor pro tem. I'll look forward to having your committee request in order by the end of the year. Otherwise, I'll probably just pick them for you. So don't don't do that. And then I will also be reaching out to you guys individually to discuss. As mentioned, we need to have some kind of working agreement with the council or the mayor and administration for next year on a direction. So kind of think about your top four, five, 10 items that we want to conquer. Mr. Miller, I'll be looking forward to discussions with you and the staff about that we have tos. Probably a lot of people out there don't know how much the state and county just makes us do. So let's work together on that and and get those things gelled up. It's been truly a pleasure, our staff. I thank you tremendously. It has been a very, very difficult year. Just not being able to meet with you guys on a regular basis has been a challenge. So I appreciate everything that you guys are doing. And thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you to our first responders who are out there serving our community on a daily basis. Truly, truly amazing what they're doing. So we appreciate that. And thank you to our citizens for what what really has been a pretty good year other than than COVID. But there's been a lot of a lot of good community work that's still there out there. So I'll make my I'll keep my comments brief and wrap it up there.
Thank you.
I agree with everything everyone said. I have to say COVID fatigue is real. I even have it. We all have it. It's exhausting, but we have to stay strong. Carry on till everybody's vaccinated. So mask up, socially distance, wash your hands. And honestly, if you have any symptoms of COVID, fever, fatigue, cough, sore throat, please stay home and don't go out. Don't go visit your grandma in the nursing home. It's a bad idea. Our hospitals are filling up right now as we speak. It's frightening. Happy holidays to everybody and please get takeout at all our local restaurants, shop at Birches, shop at all of our local stores and do what you can. But.
Mayor Pro 10 now X. Mr. Mr. Elwood, as as you begin, let me let me just lead into your into your comments with the thank you for your work this year with me being in in the first year, and then we got whammed with the COVID, as we all know. But thanks for hanging in there and and doing doing your best to try and help me get navigate this year. So with that, it's yours.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. And it was one of my big messages is just essentially echoing what Ms. Colin said. And so I will defer to the expert, which she is, and say, do what she said. And then to you, Your Honor, yes, this was a curious year with you coming in new COVID, everything else that that unleashed and all the tensions that came with it. There was new faces in the council. There are new big issues. And honestly, it felt like each week I'd say next week's got to be better. Can't get any worse than this. And inevitably, it did get worse for a number of different reasons. So it's been a trying year, but in the end of the year, here we are. We're going into the holiday season. I feel like we've got a rough year under our belt as a new team, which will only make us stronger in the coming year for next year. We still have a lot of issues that we need to work out as a team on certain topics as we proceed. But I think we can do that. And I think we can do that positively. I also want to thank to the the public. I feel like there was a heck of a lot of folks that were coming to the table to express their opinions, either via email or in the meetings. And I really felt that even with COVID, they were still actively aware of what we were doing and the decisions we were making and how it will impact them. So I appreciate all of that effort and everything that those folks came forward. I also want to say another note about Dave Olson. I'll miss him. He was definitely a contributing member to our meeting cycles and all that. And so a big thought of appreciation and respect for him and his family. Other than that, I'd also like to thank all the first responders and everybody else who does not have the ability like me to work from home. I can, you know, I have a job, so that's a wonderful thing, but I can hide in my my home office here and do what I need to do. And there are a lot of people that don't have that luxury. So it's not lost on me. But that's the condition and that's the state. And I and I really appreciate and respect and have great admiration for people that have to go out of their home and have to make things happen because making things happens is how is how our society continues to move forward. And I have tremendous respect for those people. And definitely a lot of gratitude. My entire family does. I could go on and on, because this is the end of the year, and there's a lot to recap, but I won't. Other than that, I'd like to say happy holidays if we don't have another meeting here coming up soon. And hats off to the staff. Tremendous year that you guys had to deal with all of this. And I know I'm just repeating sentiments that my other colleagues have said, but it's important that you hear it from all of us because we all feel it. So it's not lost on us either. So thank you for all that you do for putting up with us, making sure that we're informed so we can make the best decision possible. I would like to think on that last note, I feel like this year there was a heck of a lot more due diligence evolved and a lot of decisions we made. I felt really informed in a lot of things that were key to us making proper decisions. So thank you for all of that and that effort. Other than that, I'll wrap up and say if we don't have another meeting here, happy holidays. See you on the flip side. I welcome 2021 with big open arms. I'm ready to say goodbye to this year as of like middle of this year. So let's go into 2021, strong and happy and positive. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all the council for your comments. Mr. Miller, would you like to lead off? And then I will make it to other directors as being that it probably is the last meeting of the year. If you'd like to follow him with any comments, you're welcome.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, I just want to thank the council for supporting the staff. You know, I thought moving here to North Bend, I would become a planning director in a small town. And I had this vision of riding off into the sunset. And it changed a little on me. And I'm really having a good time. I want you all to know that. I I think all of you, I thank you, Rob, mayor, for working closely with me. I think we make a good team. I thank the executive team for giving incredible support and dedication. I thank Dana for adding a whole new dimension to our our communications, and it's a great thing. And I also want to do a special shout out to Landy for staying around and propping me up and giving me some great advice and helping us all through this year. It was a tough year for all of us, but I think her contribution really made it a lot better. So happy holidays to everybody. Thank you.
Regus, would you like to say anything?
I'm I'm still worn out from the the all the material on the consent agenda tonight. No, I don't have anything to say tonight. Thanks.
That was enough. Ms. Masco, any final thoughts from you?
I think pretty much everything has been said, but yes, thank you to Suzie for this gargantuan packet that she's had to put together. It's made COVID has made putting packets together and even the minute things. That usually seem minute a lot more major in our world, having to do a lot remotely. So appreciate all of the staff that we work with. Our mayor and you, council, for all your support and helping us get through this year as well.
Ms. Demming, you got you got. Right out the end of the year with us.
Yes, just wanted to say thank you for having me and I'm excited for next year. Hopefully, you know, we sometime next year we get to come back and meet in person. I get to know you guys a little bit better. Since I, you know, wasn't here before COVID hit. So looking forward to next year and and this adventure. Thank you.
And I'll I'll lead off my comments with, you know. That's the leadership team. It took us a while this year to get all the pieces into place. And it it was it was great. Often you hear these things, whether it be from a mayor or CEO of a company or what have you, can't do it without the folks around you. Well. That is an absolute given. Cannot do this job without the dedicated staff we have. And each of these folks leads incredible, important departments for the city, getting things accomplished. I appreciate each and every one of them. We obviously, we made some adjustments, some changes throughout the year from. Mark making one of those hard decisions to say, I see what's ahead of us in public works. I need to go take care of them. Dave stepping up. Rebecca applying and thank you for coming to North Bend to complete our team. Don, who I don't know, probably was putting in hundred and twenty hour weeks for most of this year. And I say that with very little, that's not much exaggeration. And and yes, to to Lundy coming back off of the bench to support me. And all of us tremendous tremendous help this year. It's it's it. Boy, it was an interesting start. It got more interesting there in late February going into March. We managed to accomplish an awful lot. Even with COVID going on and even with the minor disagreements here and there policy wise. The team showed how it works together. Council shows how it works together and how we both interact to get things accomplished for the city. I appreciate each and every one of you. So thank you for that. Moving to a little lighter information, city is inviting everyone to help us light up North Bend this holiday season. We're launching our first ever holiday spirit contest, encouraging all to decorate their homes or businesses this holiday season. The contest features different categories and prizes. To find about more about this event, including how to register, please visit the news section of the city's website. In an effort to celebrate the holidays safely, the city of North Bend has teamed up with the Downtown Foundation. For a special holidays virtual celebration this holiday season. The hometown holidays countdown calendar is posted on our city's website. From November twenty eighth through December twenty fifth, this unique calendar is your one stop. Location for information about local virtual holiday events, fundraisers and activities to help you keep local North Bend. And support local businesses and organizations during the holidays. More information again about this event, including a link to the hometown Holly Days Countdown Calendar is available on the news section of the city's website. As you've already heard, a number of council members comment on, as a reminder, we do plan on canceling the December fifteenth city council meeting. And the December twenty second city council workshop pending no last minute changes to expectations. And as this is likely our last council meeting of twenty twenty, I want to wish all of you in the audience a very happy holiday season. Please do say safe. Please do wear those masks. Please do keep your distance. And please take care of our local businesses, not just the takeout, not just. Going by the retail stores, but think it all the way through the other businesses that are struggling such as the. The fitness centers, such as the other businesses who. Aren't retailer oriented or restaurant oriented. Remember, we have a lot of businesses that are having to severely curtail operations. So. The more you can do to support them, the better for all of us. They they provide an awful lot of community connection. And they bring an awful lot back into the community, supporting each and every one of us. So please, please do that. With that. Want to announce that we are going to move to executive session to discuss potential litigation pursuant to RCW. Forty two dot thirty dot one ten one I. And collective bargaining negotiations pursuant to RCW forty two dot thirty dot one four zero parents for. We do expect the session to last up to sixty minutes and there is action expected to be taken following that session. With that. Don, if you would help. Folks who are not part of the executive session into the lobby. That would be all staff under director. Okay, welcome back. We're returning from executive session. Mr. Goddell, I believe you have a motion for us.
Yes, I do, Your Honor. I moved to authorize the mayor to enter into a separation agreement with Julie Posey, providing for full release of all claims. And separation payment in the amount of thirty thousand dollars in a form and content acceptable to the city attorney.
Second. I have a second.
I guess I didn't have to read obtain the second, right?
No, I have a motion by Mr. Goddell, second by Mr. Elwood. Any further discussion?
No, I think it's been thoroughly discussed. I think it's the right thing to do and I think we should move forward.
All right. Other comment? Seeing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It is unanimous. And with that, thank you very much, council. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Last year. Got a motion and a second by the same two. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you much, everybody. We'll see you next year.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays, everyone.